I was planning commission on third.
But a decent amount of the time I didn't.
Planning commission on third, she said. I guess we're.
The twenty first and.
Last week. Twenty first and twenty third. We had a lot of meeting.
Like a credit for covering the budget.
Stuff like you do. You know.
Oh, there was one I wanted to show you. I'll show you. Light man, I share.
No.
First.
I did send you.
Thanks again.
Get you a meat.
The leg toes, that one or? Oh, it's Theodore Hunt.
I'm gonna call the order, the Buckingham Planning Commission meeting for March twenty eighth. Please stand, as Commissioner Shoemaker will lead us under invocation, and Commissioner Doria will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for another opportunity for our Planning Commission to do the business of Buckingham County. We ask for your guidance and wisdom to make our decisions in your image, and we pray for your traveling mercies as we leave here tonight. It's in your name we humbly pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us a status of quorum. We have seven of seven, so we have a quorum. Adopting agenda, is there any changes to the agenda, Nikki?
No, sir, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So move. Oh, yes.
Oh, we do have a change?
Uh, if you want to, it'd be a good, to me, it'd be a good night to s- to make a chairman and a vice chairman while we help you. Do you wanna add that to it?
If you'd like to make that change, yes, sir, we can, um, take action to.
Okay, do you wanna make that the last thing when we do Commissioner matters?
That'd be fine.
Okay, alright.
Fine.
Approval with the one change to the agenda.
Alright, make a motion with the change, okay?
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Answer. Alright, that brings us to approval of minutes. We have minutes for our regular meeting, February twenty eighth of this year. They have a motion to approve as presented. Second. Alright, motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. They are approved. Do we have, uh, this brings the public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for the public comment?
Uh, yes, sir, Teresa McManus.
Okay, you have, uh, please come forward to the podium like you were doing. Got three minutes, state your full name and address. Uh, we'll be talking, uh, we have two public hearings.
I'm not gonna discuss those now. Hi, Teresa McManus, ten fifty nine Scotts Bottom Road. Um, I'm here to just say that we're not all happy with what's been going on with a lot of the planning commissions, with things that have been passed, that things that haven't been passed. But I wanna remind you that we are formed, this country was formed when we set our pledge allegiance and everything else on small businesses, on agriculture. The country's going to hell in a handbasket, guys, and young lady, pretty young lady, by the way. You want me to bitch? I can. I always do. Trying not to tonight. But I live on Scotts Bottom Road. I have logging trucks that go down my road at a thousand miles an hour, I swear to you. My road is twenty-two feet wide. That's gonna become pertinent later on, alright? Something needs to be done about the speed on our road. If I had children, I'd be screaming. I live far enough off that it doesn't matter. Scotts Bottom Road is dangerous, and it's the logging trucks, and everybody else who speeds down that road. Something should be done. I've noticed you've had things out there. I know you've had people complain about it before. When I drive my horse trailer down Scotts or down Carra-Ira and a logging truck comes around, I'm in the woods. I'm off the side of the road. Because they speed and they're down the center of the road. Remember what you're here for. You're here for the community, not for yourself. You're here to keep small businesses in this community, rural businesses in this community. That's what we're here for. That's what the country was founded on. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Any more than else, Nikki, signed up?
No, sir, no one.
Alright, I'll close the public comment and move us to our whole business. Public hearing case twenty-two, Erin Byler.
Yes, sir, um, this case twenty-two, S U P three hundred. The landowner and applicant is Erin Byler, tax map one twenty-four, parcel twelve. This case was introduced to you last month. Um, it does contain approximately a hundred and twenty-one point six acres, and it's located at two fifty-seven Sprosses Lane in the Maysville Magisterial District. This is an A-one zoning district, um, with the watershed overlay. Um, the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating a sawmill. The zoning ordinance does not permit a commercial sawmill as permitted by right use in agricultural A-one zoning district. However, within the A-one zoning district, a commercial sawmill may be permitted by the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors by a special use permit, following recommendation by the Planning Commission in accordance with this ordinance in the Code of Virginia. Planning Commission may recommend, and the board may impose, conditions to ensure protection of the district if the special use permit is approved. This case came to the attention of the zoning administrator, myself, by way of a complaint. After investigation and meeting with the landowner, it was discovered that a commercial sawmill was operating. Staff has been working with Mr. Byler since August of twenty twenty-one for a completed application to submit for review, which is what you all have in front of you this evening. After, um, there were ten conditions, um, imposed with the introduction of the case, and after last month's discussion, um, that discussion, um, brought about four new conditions, which have been, um, discussed with Mr. Byler, and he did receive a copy last week, so we've been in communication in regard to those. Some of them were the hours of operation, seven AM to approximately four PM, Monday through Friday. This is taken directly from the minutes of the meeting last month. The next condition change is the driveway entrance from State Route twenty should be installed per the VDOT permit, and driveway width to sawmill should be at least thirty foot wide to accommodate proper ingress and egress of all traffic to include emergency vehicles. Signs shall be placed at State Route twenty to alert public of commercial sawmill entrance, and all signs shall adhere to local, state, and federal guidelines. And an additional operation of the sawmill shall begin within two years of the time that the approval by the Board of Supervisors becomes final and non-appellable, or the special use permit shall become null and void. Mr. Byler is with us this evening, and I know that he would, um, be happy to discuss those conditions and, and further answer any questions and comments.
Okay, um, do the Commissioners, before we have the public hearing, have any questions for Mr. Byler?
Yes, I do, um.
Hey, Mr. Byler.
The, uh, I know on the paperwork it says engineer looked at your building, but do we have it, the last thing it says, the engineer said it's good for commercial building? I don't. I don't have it. Do we have it? I missed it?
I believe these are drawings. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Byler, and you may come to the.
Yes, Mr. Byler, would you come up to the podium, please, sir?
The drawings are included from Mr. Duncan. I believe that our building inspector will request, um, or require a letter from the, uh, structural engineer, just ensuring, um, the safety standards of the sawmill. So the drawings are here, but we don't have a letter from him, but that would be, um, a conversation to have with the building inspector for that further requirement. Cause you've got the drawings and the plan, so if that structural engineer, he would be the same individual to write your letter of certification.
Good evening, everybody.
We also have Steve Snell with VDOT.
Right.
Joining us virtually as well.
Dan, did that answer your question at all?
Well, maybe I missed it, but, uh, no, I just thought I had, I already had a lot of. You already got the, you already got the lot of, I missed it.
Yeah, all I have is the, what you have in front of you, and that's, that's stamped by engineer. So, I mean, really, what, what more do you need?
But these drawings were generated before or after your building was constructed?
After the building was constructed.
Right, so I think, Mr. Allen, if we're along the same path, have, have you had someone formally inspect the building that you have built for safety inspection?
Excuse me?
So if these drawings were generated after you constructed the building that's already on the premises, has someone come back to verify and provide certification or a letter that it was built to these drawings?
No, no, ma'am.
You would, uh, that letter would need to be from the building inspector, correct?
That letter would need to be from the structural engineer that had inspected the building, um, and then if, would, the reason that this would be required is because the building itself was, the original permit was issued for a farm use building. Now, if the special use permit is, um, approved ultimately, then the, uh, classification of the building would have to be, um, certified, because it was first a farm use building where there was no commercial activity, special use permit, then it's that, or constitutes a, uh, construction, uh, commercial use of the building. So yes, um, an engineer's letter of certification would be required.
Okay.
For any building that changes classification, this is.
Alright.
So would, would that, just a letter from him, would, would that have been sufficient without the drawings?
The last time we had a situation of this, we had the drawings, and I believe that there was a letter from that same engineer that has, that has your drawings here that would state that the building located at, on the property of, meets the standards necessary by the Building Code of Virginia for commercial use. And if, if there are any questions regarding that particular certification, that would go through the building inspector. And if all is well with the building and the permit is, um, were to be approved, then that would go directly to Tommy Ranson, the building inspector.
So really, all you need is basically a letter from this engineer saying that it's.
Yes.
Location.
And that it's, um, construction, that it's structurally sound, meets the design standards for the Building Code of Virginia for a commercial building.
Let me write that down.
And if I've left anything out, you're welcome to contact myself and Mr. Ranson.
Uh, name and address. Uh, wanna run that by me again?
Name, address, um, the building itself, the usage, that it is, um, structurally sound and meets the Building Code of Virginia for commercial construction. Or the purpose proposed.
Do you have any other Commissioners have any questions at this time before we do the public hearing? Of applicants?
Well, do we have a, uh, VDOT people on the phone?
We do, but we do have the one person signed up for a public hearing, too.
Oh, go ahead.
What I was gonna do is do the public hearing and then over.
Okay, that'd be fine, that'd be fine, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Byler, you can sit down now. We're gonna go ahead and do the public hearing and then probably call you back up.
Yeah, sure.
Give you a chance to answer any questions or whatever. Alright, I'll now open up the public hearing for this. Uh, you say we do have ones, someone signed up?
It's me again.
Oh.
Teresa McManus, yes, sir.
So, we litigate small business to death. Have you been to some of the small business that his grandfather clothed in here? Have you looked at their buildings? Have you seen how they're falling down, but we don't go back in and say to them, have you, are you up to date? Do you have this letter? Something that's gonna come in is the thirty feet wide of his damn driveway that is on that paperwork, too. And I'm gonna address that, cause I thought he was gonna get to first. If he's gotta have a thirty-foot wide driveway, because it's gotta have emergency vehicles and the logging trucks come in, then damn it, Scott Bottom Road better be thirty frickin' feet wide, because I have logging trucks and I have all kinds of ambulances going down my road, and it's twenty-two feet. And I measured it in three different spots, gentlemen. Bell Road, by the way, is twenty-two feet. Fifteen is twenty-two feet. Twenty is twenty-two feet. But you want him to widen a driveway to make it thirty feet and cost him all that money? Does our declaration not state somewhere in it that we have God-given rights? One of them is the pursuit of happiness, one, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Is this man not trying to pursue happiness? Is he not trying to provide for his family like you do? And you're litigating him to death and not letting him so, uh, provide for his family? You should be ashamed of yourselves, all of you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. That was the only.
That's the only person signed up. Yes, sir.
Alright, I'll close the public hearing. We'll turn this back over to the Commission. Do we happen to have Mr. Snell on the phone?
Yes.
Does any of the Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Snell? That's the VDOT representative.
I do, yes.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. R.
Mr. Snell, are you with us? You can hear us this evening? Um, one of our Commission members, um, Commission Member Joyce Gooden does have some questions for you in regard to this case.
Okay. Greetings, Mr. Snell. We've had several, um, citizens speak about the roads, and my concern is the signage of the roads. If the roads are, can you hear me? You not hear me? Okay. The roads have no restriction signs on them, and my question is, since the vehicle, since the roads are built for vehicles and there's no restrictions on the highways, does that mean that any vehicle can be operated on that highway? Because the questions have been about the size of the, um, trucks bringing in lumber, the size of the work trucks that are coming in on roads, and I just need to know, if I don't see a restriction sign on the road, does that mean that the road is open to any vehicle?
Yes, so the roads of Virginia are open to, and that's the purpose of the roads, and we do not restrict the roads except for, uh, weight when you have a bridge limit. So, any legal vehicle that the DMV allows is allowed to use the roads?
I have more.
Up yourself.
Alright. Also, we've had citizens complain about, um, curves in roads that the curves seem either steep or too sharp to accommodate, uh, especially, um, loaded wood trucks. And I just had a concern about that. So, um, the speeds posted on roads and, um, curves, so if it's, if it seems to be steep to me, does it mean that it's steep to VDOT? That's the question.
Well, yeah, I mean, the roads in Virginia as a whole are, a lot of the, especially local roads, are fairly old. You know, the state itself is fairly old, so a lot of those roads were built before automobiles and large trucks. And through the Bird Act, a lot of those roads became public roads. Um, they do allow any type of traffic, but at times they are narrow and they are steep. That's just the nature of the history of Virginia. Um, our primary roads, which are like Route twenty and Route fifteen, we try to make those for the large volume, uh, straight, safe roads and the local roads. It's, uh, driver caution in terms of the speed and the, uh, maneuverability of what is on the road. Now, the locality can ask for a truck restriction, but that would have to originate at the locality. VDOT does not put truck restrictions on the roads unless locality, uh, passes in action that they want truck restrictions on a certain road.
And when you're referring to the locality, are you talking about the county or a community?
Well, it could be whatever the governing, uh, community. It, usually, it, it's a county, but it could be a town, such, or it could be a city. Um, it, if you request to limit truck traffic, we would look into it to see what the geometry of the roads are, and if it's justified, we would allow it. Um, but it wouldn't be initiated until a resolution was passed asking to limit the truck on the roadway.
Alright, another question. I have often wondered what determines putting, and I refer to it as a stripe down the middle of the road. I actually live on a road that has no stripes, um, either down the middle or on the side. But I have been on roads that don't really look any different to me than my road, yes, but it has the, the lines down the middle. So what determines? Is it the width of the road that determines what, whether or not you put stripes down the middle?
Well, there are several factors, but typically the determining factor is the width of the road. A lot of the roadways that were taken in with the Bird Act are less than, you know, twenty feet wide, so we would not put a stripe down those roads. Another factor would be the amount of traffic that, that is on the roadway, but typically, if you see a road that has a stripe and then it terminates somewhere on that roadway, it's because the, uh, either the shoulder, which is the side of the road where the grass is, or the pavement itself have become narrower. So, yeah, typically it is the width of the road that determines whether it has a stripe or not.
So if a road has no stripe down the middle, it still can accommodate large trucks?
It can, to the, to the restriction of the driver themselves to be cautious. It's, if it's a local road and it's only eighteen feet wide, we do not restrict the traffic. It is the responsibility of the individual to practice safe driving, uh, the professional driver. And as you know, in Buckingham, you have a lot of logging operations, and sometimes they're on private roads that are narrower than public roads, and sometimes they're on local roads, which are narrower than the, uh, primary roads. And that's just the nature of the business.
Okay, and the width of the primary roads are what?
Well, they vary. Um, the ones that came in under the Bird Act, which are the oldest roads, are typically eighteen feet wide. We would like a road to be twenty-four foot wide, but we can't always get that, cause we don't have a right of way. And, uh, it could even get, the narrowest, um, you want, ideally would be eighteen feet. They can't get narrower than that for a very low-volume road, where you just have a few houses on the road, especially if it's gravel. And you also will include the shoulder with that, so you don't have a shoulder. In, in essence, the road run from ditch to ditch.
Another question. What's the Bird Act? I'm not familiar with it.
Pass in Virginia? I can't remember the date. I want to say nineteen twenties. But at the time, the roads were not, they were all, well, many of the roads were not in the public domain. So by law, uh, Virginia Senate passed a law that said that all roads that are of public use will automatically have a right of way and will become public roads and the public will maintain that road. And that was the initiation of the gas tax, which pays for maintenance and upkeep. And it did, to a certain extent, alleviate many local property owners from having to maintain the roads in front of their houses. The limitation is they want it to take very little land, so there's very narrow right of ways. And it's, unless we actually buy land on those local roads, we can't expand them any farther than where they are, as they existed back when the Bird Act was passed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Snell, this is, uh, Commissioner Pickford. I do have one question for you. Uh, if a community wanted to impose or ask for a speed limit, say, on a secondary road, what is the, uh, procedure for them to do that?
Um, you can request that through a work order or to contact Scott directly. Typically, though, VDOT, when we look at speed limits, we will not lower the speed limit below what people are currently traveling. Um, so if people are going fifty-five, we will not lower the speed below that, because we, we don't want people to have unreasonable expectations. Uh, unless there's a geometry problem where you'll see a lot of times we'll put up yellow signage for a slow curve or a dangerous intersection. But the speed limit as a whole, you know, it's either be thirty-five, forty-five, or fifty-five, basically based on the purpose of the road, whether it's a primary road that's meant for through traffic or a local road, uh, and whether it's gravel or hard surface. But you can request to lower the speed limit. Uh, as I said, we will look into that, but it's, it's fairly uncommon for us to lower a speed limit. Uh, the best action to make sure people are driving at the safe speed is, uh, enforcement of the speed limit, where no one is going above the posted speed limit. If that's, it's difficult to do, but it is much more effective than just putting up a sign.
So in other words, some of the community people, if they chose to, could perhaps contact the state police and start with that?
Yeah, or the sheriff's office or whoever enforces the speed limits. Um, if you do have a problem area, they'll look into it and see if there are problems on that road, and they'll, perhaps they'll be more vigilant in that particular area, uh, if you have a particular problem. But in terms of the changing the speed limit, as I said, it's, it would, like Route twenty, we would not change the speed limit on that, just because the geometry of the road is designed for the speed limit it is.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Steve.
Mr. Snell, I have a question. Are you familiar with this case that we're reviewing tonight?
Um, yes, I, I, I mean, I've been introduced to it today, and, um, my permits manager who works for me had issued a permit for this business with the understanding that they would not use the current entrance, but use a, create a new entrance a little farther south that has better sight distance, so people can see these trucks pulling in and out.
Okay, and what I'm asking is, is if you have signed off on it, if you're okay with the stipulations, uh, that, that's, you know, written, uh, and VDOT's okay with that?
Well, in terms of the use, we, um, so the sawmill, or there's also a discussion of putting a school in.
Right, this is in regard to the sawmill, Mr. Snell.
Yeah, so the sawmill, we, we would not dictate the use either way. We just dictate the safety. Um, someone had mentioned life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, so that we kinda cover the life part, that we want it to be safe. So we can't restrict a use. It's really up to the county, but once you say there's a use, we will restrict how the entrance is, only mostly for the purpose of safety. I mean, in a large development like a Walmart, it will also be for traffic control, but on a smaller one like this, it's almost a hundred percent safety. So that's why they can't use their existing road and we need a newer road. Um, and someone has, was upset about the width, which is thirty feet. Uh, the purpose of that is since what we call a design vehicle for the use, which in this case would be a tractor-trailer, we want them to be able to turn into this business, if they were taking a right turn, without having to cross over the center line to make the turn. So the entrance is dictated by the type of vehicle that, so it can stay in its lane without crossing to oncoming traffic to make them turn into the business. So it's a, it's a safety issue.
Are you okay, or VDOT okay with this, everything that, like I said, that we've discussed? That's what my question is.
Yeah, um, yeah, it's, in terms of, we're okay with what is, you know, in our lane, as some people say, which is the entrance, as long as they use the entrance on the permit, which is to move it a little farther south near a right's lane. We're fine with it. But to use the existing entrance, then no, we are not. But as we have issued our permit, we are fine with the business.
Okay, I have one more question. Uh, signage on the road, what would be the procedure to have signage put up on the road uh, for passengers going down Route twenty or either way, uh, to slow, either, just let them know? Uh, to slow, either just let them know or slow them down to letting them know that entrance is there? Is that VDOT's responsibility or would we have to go back through the county?
You could ask for it in this special use permit, that you'll ask them to put up signage, um, and whatever signs you want. It would have to follow MUTCD, which is the Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices. Typically, we would not put up the signage like that unless it was a dangerous intersection or curve. That's why you see our yellow signs. But you could request it during this stage that you would like the owner. So the burden would be on the owner to pay for the sign and put up the sign, and we'd have to send it to traffic. It could still get turned down, but at least the owner would have to make the effort to try to get the signage up. Um, and so as a condition, you may say, uh, you can want truck entering signs, um, on the approval of VDOT.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Snell from the commissioners?
Yeah, back to that, uh, to your entrance. Um, it just, just talked about thirty feet wide. But thirty feet wide, what I'm looking on here now is, uh, over to your ditch. And then your actual road is twenty-four feet wide. That's in your, uh, commercial entrance. Um, once you get past your commercial entrance, how wide does it road have to stay? If it's a quarter mile or whatever, is it still got to be twenty-four feet or is it fifteen, eighteen feet? What, what's it after it gets past the commercial entrance?
Yeah, yeah, that is actually determined by the, the engineer or the designer for the homeowner. We, we have, we ask them to do what we call turning movements for the vehicle, as we call it, the design vehicle for this use. So as in this case, it is the tractor trailer, but it could be just a regular UPS delivery truck. But they would show on a map based on the road. And you're right, the road could be twenty feet wide, it could be eighteen, it could be forty feet. Uh, the narrower it is, usually the wider their entrance needs to be to make up for the difference. But they have to show they can make the movement without crossing over the, the middle stripe down the road. So it's, it's site specific for each, each entrance. Um, so there is no, it's always this width. It's, it's whatever their vehicles are using, how can it make it into that entrance without crossing over to oncoming traffic?
Right, so what's, what's as small as it can be? I'm just trying to see what we, what the lowest and biggest?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
What, what's his smallest width that you would say that road would be?
Also, for a commercial instance, there is a minimum width. Um, and it's typically thirty feet wide unless it's a low volume, which this might be a low volume. Uh, but you would have to have less than twenty percent trucks to be low volume. But a low volume entrance, you can go down to twenty-four feet. And it will also vary if it's one-way, like a McDonald's or a bank might have. A one-way entrance can go down to, uh, ten feet. So there, there is some variation in what the minimum is, but typically it's, it's thirty feet wide. There, so it's not, we're not asking for much more than what is typical.
All right, and y'all talking about speed limits, I know now, some people don't know it, but I hadn't heard it. But all the gravel roads now are speed limited at thirty-five miles an hour.
Mm-huh.
That's just something that, uh, I don't know where everybody's heard that yet or not. It's new to me. I'm running a curve eighty mile an hour either way.
All right.
And I have a question for Mr. Snell. Uh, Mr. Bowler, do you want to come forward? I'd like to, would like to ask you, just make sure you're comfortable, you understand all of these conditions? Because we did add four on to it.
I think there's a little bit of confusion, maybe a lot of confusion. Okay. Your condition number five says the driveway should be thirty feet wide. I think, uh, what's his name, Mr. Snell with VDOT?
Mr. Snell.
Uh, I think he was taking that to be the entrance.
Correct.
But from what I understand, condition five, that's talking about my actual driveway. Am I correct? Somebody drew it up.
I wrote that.
What, what were you referring to?
So I, they, last conversation when we were here, um, last month, um, was talking about the width of the driveway. Because there was so much discussion, I put thirty feet in because lots of numbers were thrown out. As I indicated to you, tonight's a night for a discussion with the planning commission because you're going to be asked if you agree with any and all of these conditions. Per Mr. Snell with VDOT, your permit for the driveway installation must be thirty feet wide. That's what he's saying is safe for your low-volume construction. So tonight, based upon the conversation we've heard about fifteen feet, eighteen foot, twenty-two feet, ten foot, everything that's come through, this is where the planning commission and you working together, and the planning commission ultimately deciding what's going to protect the integrity of the district and the safety of everyone on Route twenty and those coming to and from your sawmill. This is where you'll discuss that driveway width.
Uh, yeah, excuse me. So were you talking about the, the entrance out at twenty for thirty feet?
The entrance is thirty feet because that is what's on your permit from VDOT. I put in the driveway to be thirty feet wide, you can see where it says here, and driveway width to sawmill should be at least thirty feet wide.
The whole way?
If, yeah, if you don't agree with that, which is exactly what I said, this is where you have your conversation and y'all.
Well, yeah, I would like to respectfully disagree with that.
And that's what I told you to do tonight, so the planning commission's here to address those concerns.
So here we have a, this is what Mr. Edwards gave me. And it's, it's very basic. So what, what he did, we walked out and looked at the entrance, and he didn't spend a lot of time with it. He said, "This site's good." So he said he's going to give me a rough sketch. It really doesn't say much. But basically he said, "I, I need to have it sixty foot wide at the very, you know, where, where it curves out." Just make sure it's sixty foot wide, trucks can pull out level, no corners. And, you know, just common sense, and he's, he said he's fine with it. So once we're fifty foot from Route twenty, that's, I guess that's where you guys come in, come in. Is that correct? You, you don't have anything to say about the entrance?
Right, that's VDOT's.
Right, right.
What she's referring, uh, Nikki's referring to is the access road going on into the sawmill.
Right, and that, that's where the thirty-foot question comes up. And we, we heard a lot about roads tonight. So, so, I mean, what are your thoughts on a thirty-foot expressway going to a sawmill?
Well, my main concern is, like I, I said before, just as long as you can get, you know, if you have, get emergency vehicle in, if you have trucks, if you happen to have, something happened. So, uh, you know, normally, uh, tractor trailer, even if it's going straight, it's ten feet. You know, you're, you're all right, so if you've got a twenty-foot road width, you're probably safe, you've got two lanes.
Yeah, and we talked about that at the presentation last month, about emergency vehicles. If, if I have an emergency on my property, I want the emergency vehicles to come in the quickest way. That's Sprouse's lane.
Right.
Does that make sense?
That does make sense, but that's something we would probably have to ask Mr. Snell if he's on a, I would assume he could answer that for us. If you're asking for emergency vehicles not to come into commercial entrance, but to come into the private one.
Yeah, I, I mean, wouldn't that make sense? If, if you're on the phone with nine-one-one, I got an emergency, but listen, make sure you take that long way around to get, to get to my place so you can safely come in.
All right, but we will talk to Mr. Snell about that.
The chairman.
I'm sorry.
I just said, if it's an emergency vehicle, you still want that emergency vehicle to go in safely.
Right.
Oh, right, and so, um, taking risks, the, the risk would still be the same is can that emergency vehicle, um, make the turn safely and, um, and get there? So, um, making a turn in an unsafe manner, causing an accident, is not helpful to the person who is waiting on the emergency vehicle. So, you know, the better entrance, if the emergency vehicle uses that better entrance, okay? We live in a rural community. So you, I know that seconds matter, I'm a nurse by profession, so I know what an emergency is. But you still want them to be able to access, give care, and get out quickly and safely.
If, if, um, what most time happens, everybody's got their address at the end of the driveway, their number. And that's what number they'll have to, the emergency people will go by. So they, they don't know which way to turn, or if they've been in Buckingham all their life, they know where to go. But, uh, the newer ones now would have to go by the address. So if that address is into the commercial driveway, that's where they'll turn. If they know where they're going, they might turn the other way.
But if it's, and if we're talking sight distance and we're talking an emergency vehicle, an emergency vehicle and my vehicle turning in would be different because I would expect lights on an emergency vehicle that would notify anybody in the area that something is going on, which would mean that they would slow anyway. So I think the, the, so as far as an emergency vehicle turning, I don't see, you know, what the, what the concern is. And, um, and so you referred to a thirty-foot expressway, and we're not talking about an expressway, we're talking about a driveway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thirty, thirty foot wide, I mean.
Yeah, thirty foot, but referring to it in the expressway, it sounds like people are going to be speeding down or it's abnormally large. And that's not what we're addressing, we're addressing a driveway that your business can receive trucks and trucks can safely come out of, and people still be safe on Route twenty. That's okay.
Uh, yeah, but that doesn't really have anything to do with Route twenty. We're talking about the entrance, which that's got to be sixty foot wide for trucks to pull out on twenty. Then you come in from the entrance, that's where the thirty-foot comes in. What does that have to do with safety on Route twenty?
The thirty-foot is, to me, from this picture, is from one ditch to the other ditch. And the twenty-four inches, uh, twenty-four foot is your road driveway when you first start. But once, once you get the truck turned and straight again, you cut it back to the size, you know, you probably want the two trucks to be able to pass each other, so to me, I would go back to the twenty-foot.
Yeah, I mean.
That's my thought, but I don't know.
The thirty-foot, uh, we just need to clarify that, I mean.
Yeah, well, I mean, that, the thirty-foot is what the engineer has asked for your commercial entrance. And that actually goes all the way to the ditch.
Where, where are you coming, where's VDOT come by with the thirty-foot?
Right here.
Uh, he was talking about that.
Yeah, oh.
Yeah, but, uh, what, what this, this condition's talking about doesn't have anything to do with the entrance, from what I get.
Right, but I mean, that's, that's numbers that that was.
He wants to make the driveway twenty foot wide, that's what Mr. Bowler is asking.
That's all.
I mean, even twenty foot.
Yeah.
Which is enough room for.
My opinion is, is extreme.
Well, maybe you're not asking twenty foot, Mr. Bowler, I apologize. You, the driveway width, I stated that maybe you were asking it to be twenty feet wide. What are you asking for that driveway? The, the actual size of the driveway, past the entrance to your sawmill?
Fifty foot where, where VDOT stops.
Right.
Uh, from there into my sawmill.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I mean, is twelve or fifteen feet, is, isn't that satisfactory?
That from ditch to ditch, or, I mean, ditch to center or?
Pavement or rock.
Gravel, gravel, rock.
Oh, and which is it? Is it, is it from the center of the road to the ditch? How, how wide would that be?
Center of the road, I don't quite follow.
Of the driveway, the center of the driveway to the ditch, would that be fifteen feet?
I, I was talking overall, like twelve or fifteen from ditch to ditch. Twelve or fifteen feet of gravel, of rock.
Is what he's asking.
Surface area, okay.
Yeah. Wouldn't that be satisfactory?
I mean, I think if a tractor trailer can get down the driveway, an emergency vehicle can get back there. I mean, I think thirty is definitely really excessive.
Thank you.
I mean, if he, if the trucks get in and out safe, I think the rest of it's on him. I mean, if it's too narrow, that's on him, I mean, it's not hurting anybody else.
And it's not like it's, I'm inviting the public in. Yes, it's going to be a commercial operation, but I hire trucks to take out lumber. I work with loggers who bring me logs. It's not like just anybody's going to be bringing in logs and, and if, if the, if he has problems, it's up to him if he doesn't want to come back again. And another thing we could do, uh, along the, the driveway, we could make a few pull-offs, you know?
That's, that's the biggest thing, is if one truck's coming in full, one's coming out empty, you don't want them running over in somebody's driveway, whatever. I don't know what else is they have to look at, but what I'm saying is, you just want them to have room to get by each other, that's all.
Yeah, for a couple of trucks a week.
You know what you got, I mean.
I'm just, I'm just saying what I have. Uh, another question, are you going to require an engineer drawing for that driveway? You know, after VDOT's done, the driveway into my sawmill?
I don't believe we normally require that. The main draw, the main focus is on that entrance.
And that would be a VDOT?
That would be VDOT, yeah.
Um, just so the owner knows, um, he'll have to make sure all the trucks use the commercial entrance. So I would recommend that he puts, uh, no trucks at his private entrance if he keeps it. Um, if you do not follow the permit, we would pull the permit and you would not be able to operate your business. So it's important that you follow the VDOT permit because we can pull it at any time if you're not within the limitations of that permit.
Mr. Snell, this is Nikki. Could you repeat that last statement? I have a couple of commission members who are indicating they did not hear you well.
Me too.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I was probably speaking too softly. Our permit is that all the trucks will use the commercial entrance. Um, if he keeps the private entrance, I would recommend that he puts up no truck traffic on that entrance or no trucks. And it's his responsibility to make sure all the trucks use the commercial entrance. If we find that he is in violation of that, we would, uh, revoke his permit and he would no longer be allowed to operate his business. Um, that is in perpetuity as long as you have the, the per, the entrance and run a business, that you will keep that entrance up to the standards of the permit and that you will use it for the purpose. So it's not something to take lightly for the main purpose that, um, if you don't follow the permit as agreed to, we would, uh, close your business down, which we don't want to do, but safety is a very important issue.
And we did kind of discuss that, didn't we, about posting signs and?
Yeah, on the Sprouse's.
Yeah.
In other words, you don't want any, he's saying you don't want any trucks to go up there.
Right, right.
And if, if they do, it could violate your permit, VDOT's permit.
Right.
Make sure you got some kind of, you know, or at least let the guys that you're buying from know when they're coming in that, hey, you got to use my new entrance. You said you had a couple more questions?
Uh, I mean, are, are we done with the, the driveway thing or is it just, just hanging, I mean?
I'd like to ask some.
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to ask Mr. Snell what he would recommend far as the driveway, uh, the surface of the driveway. Maybe you could, you could comment on that and give us an idea.
Now, are you talking about the, where the trucks will leave and enter?
No, on the main driveway into his, into the sawmill.
After they pass the commercial entrance.
Yeah, I mean, uh, that's something that we, uh, don't really get involved with. It's really up to the homeowner. Uh, lumber trucks can travel fairly rough roads. I mean, it would be nice if it was stone, but that's, there's an expense to do all that. So there's a trade-off from the owner, what, how well he wants his road maintained and how much he wants to spend. And I can't really give you the correct answer for that. Every business owner will look at it differently. Um, so it's, it's really between the owner and the county what they think the surface should be.
Well, not only the surface, it's the width of the road, the driveway we were talking about. After it passes a commercial entrance, is it all go down to ten, twelve feet away?
Yeah, I, it, again, it will depend on how often he thinks he's going to have traffic. And if he thinks he'll have trucks only just coming in once or twice a day, or if he thinks he's going to have a couple, several every hour, of whether they need to pass each other or not. And that's really what your limiting factor would be on your width.
Okay.
I, I, you know, I don't know the lumber industry enough to tell you what a good width is for a lumber truck. I would trust the industry itself to help the owner, to tell him what the width should be. I, it's kinda outside my air of expertise for, for what size of a road for lumber trucks should be. I mean, on the expressway, we use twelve feet as a minimum lane width.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to comment on that. So if, if our, our main roads have like eleven, twelve feet, why wouldn't that be satisfactory for a driveway?
I'm, I'm fine with as long as you put, I would say go with fourteen or fifteen feet width. And then as Mr., uh, Allen has suggested, go put a couple of pull-offs just in case you do have, happen to have a trucks coming at the same time.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I think that would be fine. If you have an emergency, I would assume that it, you would stop everybody from going in and, or at least going out if you could.
Yeah.
Until that emergency vehicle gets in anyway, so.
Yeah, and they have, they have lights and sirens.
Are you fine with that, sir, fifteen with pull-offs, or a couple of pull, pull-offs?
Uh, yeah, I think I'd work with that.
Yeah. Any other, let's see, what you had, uh, that was your main question, was that?
Uh, yeah, uh, that was the main thing we need clarif, needed clarify, clarification on. Uh, and I, I think we've got some answers on that.
Okay.
Uh, now, number four, I had some questions as well. Hours of operation says would be seven AM to four PM, Monday through Friday. Is that a condition that has to be very closely followed?
Well, if we put it in here, yes. So what, what did, what is your op, what do you want out?
All, all I want is the, the flexibility of, if, let's say I have an emergency order, somebody's barn burns down or something, and I'm cutting to meet a deadline, you know, pressed for time, and I don't need to stop at four PM. They need the lumber in the morning. Would I be in violation if I would work after four o'clock, is my question?
Is that something, are you, are you asking to change the time or the dates or both?
Yes, in a sense. I mean, could Saturday be included? Sunday, we're not, we're not gonna talk about working on Sunday, but, you know, could Saturday be included?
Oh, certainly, yeah, absolutely. That's why I'm asking you, what, what do you need? We're not trying to restrict you so much, we, you gotta put something in here in the condition.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be fine with normal hours of operation would be, which would leave me a little bit of flexibility. This hours of operation would or should kinda ties me down.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Weren't those, I just have a question for Nikki, weren't those hours and times put in based on?
Comment last month after the introduction was that he starts at seven o'clock, he works about six hours, but he takes a break in the morning and then in the afternoon. I accounted for those and extended it to four PM because six hours would have been about one o'clock. So to account for a couple of hours of break, I went a little bit further to four PM. Y'all talked about Monday through Friday, you asked him specifically about Saturdays and he said no Saturdays. But if that is changed, an operation needs to be something different?
And that's what I thought was in the minutes, that's why I was asking, because I, I'm working with this iPad and I'm trying to find it.
And there again.
I thought that's what you, we, we put it in based on what you had said.
What my normal hours of operation would be, yes. And I, I'm, I'm not asking for, you know, every week, I wa, I wanna work from crack of dawn till ten o'clock at night, six days a week. That, that's not what I'm asking. I'm just asking if there's any flexibility on that seven to four, Monday through Friday. In other words, if I'm working, okay, it's five minutes after four, am I in violation, is my question?
If your permit is issued for a specific time and a specific date, yes, you would be in violation. I would, we do not come constantly to monitor that, but eventually we would receive a call, I'm guessing from a neighbor, that's typically how we find out, um, or from someone, a concerned citizen. But your condition, this, this permit is specific, that's why the conditions are imposed the way that they are. Um, we've been very fortunate, the citizens of the county who've asked for special use permits have operated on a, a very high code of ethics, um, and we have not had an issue. Um, this is your chance to have that conversation with the planning commission to ensure that the operating hours that you want are included in this permit. But the expectation is that the, whatever is decided and discussed, that those are your hours of operation. If you find that those hours of operation do not meet, um, your quota, then you would be asked to file a new special use permit application to amend or adjust your current application.
Yeah, well, if, if that's the case, uh, yeah, I, I guess I can't really agree to that condition. It, it's gonna, it's gonna bind me, it's gonna tie me up too much, I mean.
What do you wanna say, what do you wanna say on that?
It was seven PM, seven AM to six PM?
That would be safer, not saying that that's gonna be my normal op.
Sure, no.
My, my normal hours of operation, yeah, seven to four, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
But, just like I asked, it.
Well, just add, what Nikki was trying to say was just ask for a little bit, this is your time to ask for more.
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant.
Doesn't mean you have to work that long, just means that you got the ability to work that long if you choose to.
The flexibility of.
Yeah, exactly, so how about seven to six and with Monday through Saturday?
That would be a lot safer.
Okay. You got that, Nikki?
Yes, sir.
You don't know working the whole day Saturday if you work, or just a half a day?
I probably won't work Saturdays, but you know, what if I want to?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wanna ask, we just wanna have it in writing, you know, when I'm. And you said you had another, two more, I think you said, you said four?
I think those were the main ones. Uh, maybe we should go back to the, the driveway a little bit. Uh, as, as far as the sawmill's concerned, I think we're done with that. But, excuse me if I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but the, the, the school thing that's proposed for tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if I understand correctly, that's proposed as the new driveway would be going to the school.
They're gonna use same driveway, yes.
And Mr. Smucker's not here tonight, had a death in the family, and Jonathan King's gonna represent him. But I, I just wanted to bring up a few things. There, there's some concern that the new driveway, if and when, that new driveway's gonna go in. You understand what I'm saying? In other words, they'd like to get their school up and have it running by August, whatever. What if the new driveway's not there? One of the questions that was gonna come up tonight.
Yeah, that would be, what I would suggest is put that on hold right now because that's the next case and you'll be taking Mr. Smucker's place. Let's finish you first.
Okay.
And then, then we'll do the next.
Well, what I wanted to clarify with that driveway is, at this point, I'm not in a big rush to go put that new driveway in.
Correct.
I, I, I wanna focus on cutting my own timber, uh, we understand the conditions. I would have two years if I get issued a special use permit to put that into action. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So, like I said, I'm not gonna be too much in a hurry. I've got my own timber to cut and, you know, maybe I'll just kinda pick away at the driveway. Maybe cut some trees and, you know, put a little gravel down and, kinda take my time on it.
I understand.
Which puts the school in a bind, cause they were proposing to use that new driveway by the end of August.
Right.
And what I'm saying is, it's not gonna happen by the end of August.
Okay.
That's the only reason I'm bringing that up and, you know.
Right, and, and I appreciate that, but we're, we're getting the two applications mixed here across and you don't wanna do that.
I understand that.
But I, I do appreciate you telling us, but that will be addressed when we do the, after the public comment.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, excuse me if I spoke out of turn, but I, I just felt while we're talking about that entrance or that driveway, and it's gonna be my driveway, maybe it should be talked about a little bit.
Right, right.
And if you have any further questions on that, when, while you're on their case, I mean, I, I could try to answer.
Yeah, yeah. See, is there any, any other questions for the applicant here? Hey, Mr. Baller, you may sit down, sorry.
Okay, uh, so.
Got something else?
Basically, in a nutshell, you're not gonna require any engineer drawings for the driveway after it's.
No.
Feet from.
VDOT, not after VDOT, no.
Right, right.
Not after VDOT.
Okay, and wouldn't be any restrictions other than the width and?
There will be, if, if this moves through us, it will be a condition, or at least a request, that you have to have the letter before the board of supervisors meeting so they can verify that it's.
Letter for the, the building?
Building, inspection of the building.
Yeah, uh-huh. Uh, another question, I, I don't know if this is in your department or not, as far as constructing the driveway. Uh, I was told there would be some restrictions to that. In other words, I wouldn't be able to do it myself. I have a dozer.
Yeah.
I mean, do you see any problems?
Not far as the driveway itself, uh, we've already specified the width on that and you've agreed to it. Uh, now the entrance, you'll have to.
Have to work with VDOT or not?
Correct.
Uh, maybe.
When he's installing the driveway, if it's over a half an acre, it would require an erosion and sediment control permit.
Right.
Um, and it does require a responsible land disturber and their, and their permit number for that. If it stays under one acre, it avoids, um, DEQ review, or it doesn't necessitate a DEQ plan.
I don't know, with being the width of that road and the distance, what did you say, a half acre?
Mm-hmm.
Not sure if you're gonna even have that.
I don't know what it is, I'm just saying that if it does constitute that amount.
You're saying under a half an acre is, is fine?
A surface area for the entire road.
It wouldn't require any N S permit.
I think we'd be safe.
Being that part of the main road is already existing, so it, I assume has been followed in, correct? It's already there, Spouses Lane.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we're not, for Spouses Lane or for Route twenty?
No, no, no.
Cause he's supposed to tie in past Spouses Lane according to what your com, everyone's conversation was last month, all the way into his, his personal driveway.
Yeah, he's gotta go around the, the lot, the, um.
Around the trailer court and tie back and, and tie in as Spouses Lane.
Well, what I'm saying is, he ties in then with the existing road that goes to the sawmill, which is already, all he's gonna do is improve it a little bit, so.
If it's under a half acre, that won't require the N S permit.
I don't think he, probably not gonna have any problem there.
Okay, go.
Just be aware of that.
Uh, anything else I should be aware of?
Uh, not that I know of, I think we discussed most of it.
See if you have any more questions.
Don't think so.
Mr. Baller, the only other thing that I have is that you brought up that Amos Smucker's not here tonight and that John King is here. In the application packet, it does state that if you're gonna appoint a special power of attorney to discuss your case, it has to be notarized and filled out, it was not notarized, so you are, as the landowner, still have the ability to present the case for the schoolhouse. You'll be up here again, yes, sir.
Yeah, you'll be back up here shortly.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Baller.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Well, it's, uh, falls on our work, Commissioner, what, uh, what would you like to do? He's agreed to the conditions with some minor changes?
I guess we change, um, number four from, uh, seven o'clock to six o'clock and add Saturday to it?
And add Saturday. The driveway is now not thirty feet but fifteen, but we did put inch and pullover.
Right. It what?
Driveway went to fifteen feet.
Right, okay.
But requiring some pull-offs, case two trucks made.
Right, all right, all right.
And I think that was really the only two changes, wasn't it?
I think that's all we changed.
And the requirement to have the letter from the.
Right, yeah.
Engineer.
Do we need to put that in?
I've put that for a fifteenth condition, yes, sir, Mr. Baller.
Okay, all right, so I'll make, well, you wanna close the public hearing?
It's already closed.
I'm sorry, I'll make sure, all right. I'll make a motion that we, uh, move it on to the board supervisors with approval and to change number, condition four from six to seven and add Saturday. Condition five, changing from thirty to fifteen feet on the driveway with, uh, pull-offs wherever needed. And, uh, number fifteen, you split on it?
Your certification, letter of certification.
Yeah, the number fifteen, okay.
And that, the only other change that I would make is that signage, no truck traffic at the, um, private Spouses Lane entrance.
Which we'd already talked about.
Okay.
So then he would need a no truck on that road and then he need a main entrance on this road, he gonna have to put up two sign.
Number six, Steve Snell said that the owner would be responsible for applying for signage for VDOT, but it would not necessarily be approved, does that change our language in number six?
May want to think about, if it's not approved by VDOT, you do have, um, in an A1, signage is permitted if it's, of course, out of the right of way that it's eight foot tall, eight foot wide, you had an eight by eight permitted by right signage in an A1.
That's the biggest thing.
Yeah.
That's the biggest, it's non-illuminated.
And that would be on his property, cause I think our intention with the number six was to give traffic on twenty notification of a commercial entry, so on the land would be too late at that point.
Yep.
Wait, yeah, I see the same thing. Like me, it'd be another sign or two where they could.
Right, if you're coming from twenty south approaching Dillon, by the time you get to Derby Town, you know, you kinda need a sign there.
You won't never see it.
Maybe a question from Mr. Snell to ensure that design standards are met when it's implemented, I don't know what that signage.
I would assume that they could provide him some information on acceptable signs.
Right, I guess my question is if it's not approved, this condition would be dissolved.
It would.
Is that right?
Once we receive a report back from VDOT that they didn't adopt the signage.
Got clarification on that?
Mr. Snell, are you available?
Yes.
The question before you now, uh, we have a condition, the planning commission has a condition, um, regarding signage. Um, and you had stated that it would be on the owner, um, to design a sign and submit that sign to VDOT for acceptance. Will you be working with Mr. Baller to ensure it meets the design standards for signage? Um, it would be the hopes of the planning commission this evening, um, that this would be something that would be recognized and approved by VDOT, so what would that process look like?
Uh, yes, there's, there's a manual, he wouldn't actually design the sign, it would be, it's M U T C D, which is the federal government's standards for traffic signal, signs. Um, so he would have to pick one that matches the use in there. Um, then, at least in terms of being on the public road, the, the limitation would be, traffic would look at it and they wouldn't want, if there's already a lot of signs out there, they don't wanna make it cluttered with too many signs. If, if there aren't many, they would be fine with it, but if there's already a lot of signs, they would go out there and look at it and see if it's practical to install it. Um, uh, he may be responsible for the class. Um, that's, that's what I'm talking about, in terms of getting someone to go out there and put it up. But the sign would be dictated by M U T C D standard.
Is that something that you could review, Mr. Baller could review now so that he would know?
Yeah, he could look it up, um, and see who would install the signs for.
He could come by the office, I'm happy to help him, Miss McManus, I hear your comments.
Nope.
I'm sorry, Mr. Snell.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of, he could, we, we, I don't know the cost of putting up a sign, cause I don't put them up. We could have a sign shop that puts signs up all the time. There may be the chance that the sign shop would put it up if they're not busy, but typically, it would just be a permit and, uh, he would pay to have it put up. It's sort of like the same way subdivisions put up street signs.
So that would be on the state property instead of his property?
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's like a trucks entering sign, it would be on, within the right of way. But not for the, uh, private entrance where you have no, no truck traffic, that would be on his property. He could pick any sign he wants from, for that. As long as it conveys a message, cause it would be able. As long as it conveys a message, because it would be outside the right of way.
Okay.
Is that the answer?
You got that then?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Any, any other? They're waiting for a second, uh-
Yeah, yeah. Alright, so motion been made, anybody wanna make a second?
Second.
I'd have a second. Any further discussion? Hey, we think we everybody got everything covered? Alright, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed at the same time? Passes? Where's my spot there? Move it forward to the Board of Supervisors, sir. Alright, Nikki, that brings us to the school.
Yes, sir, this is case 22 S U P 301. Landowner is Aaron Bowler, and the applicant is Amos Smucker. This is located at 257 Sprouse's Lane in Dilwyn, and the applicant does wish to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating a private school, a one-room schoolhouse. Um, of course, this is the same property that we discussed in case 22 S U P 300, tax map 124, parcel 12. Zoning ordinance does not permit a private school as a permitted by right use in an A1 district. However, within this A1 district, a private school may be permitted by the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors by special use permit following recommendation by the Planning Commission in accordance with this ordinance and the Code of Virginia. Uh, Mr. Smucker, of course, has submitted his special use permit application for review. The conditions before you this evening are 11. There were other areas that were discussed, um, last month with the introduction, uh, but there was no movement, uh, to move that forward to conditions because there were other VDOT questions to be addressed. Some of the things that were discussed were the students to be transported to and from the schoolhouse via passenger van or, or car, and no truck traffic to utilize commercial entrance, um, from 8:00 AM to 8:30 or 3:00 PM to 3:30 due to school traffic. And that would, it was the thinking that those times would, um, coincide with drop off and pickup of the children to ensure their safety.
Okay, thank you. Do, any commissioners have questions before I do the public hearing to the applicant at this time?
Yeah, the biggest thing we'll have to figure is, will the school be able to operate without the new driveway?
Well, that would be answered by, uh, the highway representative, but I, what I wanted to do is, uh, go ahead and get the public hearing over first, and then we'll go right into that.
Go ahead.
Any, any other, okay? Alright, I'm gonna ask that, uh, go ahead with the public hearing, open that.
We do have two individuals signed up. Teresa McManus will be first, and Ivan Petersheim will be second.
Yeah. As before, we got three minutes.
No problem. Have you ever been to, uh, Mr. Bowler's farm, any of you? Ever seen how big his driveway was? Do you know that his driveway used to be a business driveway for the Speedway? They had trucks and trailers coming in with their mopeds and everything else that they did there. You remember that? Tell me you do. He has vans come down to pick them up, they are the Amish. They don't drive to Farmville, they have someone pick them up. They have vans and cars, I've helped them out, they're my friends. They want to put a school in. Do you blame them? Have you been to our school lately, any of them? The girls are half naked, you know? I see it all the time, I'm appalled. This man again, trying to pursue happiness with his family. He wants to educate his kids in a good gaudy manner, and we're going to legislate him to death. Let's put permits on him and pernets on him, permits on him. Why in God's name does he have to use a business driveway? His driveway is fine. I come in and out it, the people who pick him up come in and out of it. Everyone comes in and out, UPS man, we gonna now make him and FedEx go down the other way? Where, where does it end? Where does it end? Why can't we have people have businesses or schools and educate their children properly? Where does it end? Think about it.
Thanks, ma'am.
Ivan Petersheim.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I don't know what I'm gonna talk tonight, but, uh, I put my name under the school hearing, and, uh, so here I am. I guess I'll comment about, well, where time is of the essence for the new driveway. And to use the old driveway would be practical, uh, as Teresa had said, the, the motorsports track, a lot of people in and out with that driveway. Call grandfather in. Same thing, but, uh, the one-room schoolhouses, I grew up in a one-room schoolhouse, which this would be, uh, thirty scholars average twenty-five, thirty. I noticed where VDOT said they can't restrict the business. Get how Mr. said that. Something as far as they can't restrict the business in, in a driveway. So correct me if I'm wrong on that, I know. Whatever a school is, it might not be in the category of a business, but. Have the discussion on that, and, uh, what, Aaron Bowler?
Okay, thanks, sir. That everyone, Nikki? Alright, I'll-
Yes.
Close the public hearing and, uh, turn it back over to the commissioners. I like the first thing done, and now we'll talk to the highway representative.
Yeah. Yeah, if you answered the question about, uh, the school, will the school be able to start without the new road put in?
Mr. Snell?
No, the school needs the second entrance. Whether they put it in or the logging industry puts it in, uh, because there is not adequate site distance at the current entrance. The purpose of the site distance is if someone's driving down the highway at the speed limit with fifty-five, I believe there, but at the speed limit, they have time to react, hit their brakes and stop before they get to the point where that road is. And right now, they're short about forty or fifty feet, which means they would travel through the bus about fifty feet if the bus pulled out and they, they did not swerve, which most people don't swerve. Um, it would be even worse if someone was driving above the speed limit. So we cannot allow the existing entrance to be used for any type of use that involves people other than people that live on the road.
Uh, Mr. Snell, they have, the chair will be transported by a van. Does that change anything, it will not be coming in on buggies?
No, it, it doesn't, um, just because you're, the risk, it's, um, the, the assumption people make when they go to businesses is that they have the safe entrance, uh, that meets the standard that we try to meet throughout the county. Uh, of course, existing engine businesses don't meet that because they're in a different era. But any new businesses have to meet the current safety standards, um, that's expected from all users. So whether it's a van or it's even individuals dropping people off in their own cars, the fact that you have a public use per se, it's people other than the people that actually live there, that we need that safe sto-, um, site distance down the road. Another thing is, as time goes, you always get new people using this intersection. They'll be new to the school, new to the area, and for them, they don't know, oh, this is a dangerous intersection, so I have to go extremely quickly. Uh, we don't really want to create those situations. If we can avoid them, in this case, we do not want to create that at all, especially for a school.
Okay, one other quick question, I think, or I know the answer, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. They want to start school at the end of August. If the access commercial entrance has not been developed at that point. If they opted to put, when the chair one came to in the morning and in the evening, they actually paid flagman, would that suffice for the highway department?
Could you say that again, please?
I'm, I'm sorry, sir?
He's asking you to repeat that again.
Say that last part again?
Where you're asking about the permit for daily flagging, I guess two permits a day, morning and evening.
Right, if, could they use not the commercial entrance? Commercial entrance wasn't finished, and they wanted to use the existing Sprouse's Lane entrance in. If they opted to pay flagman in the morning when the one or two vans came in, and in the evening when they left, would that suffice for the highway department?
Um, you know, we haven't done that, even though we do allow that for temporary entrances, that you can flag, do a flag operation or have police. Um, I would have to bring that up the chain to see if we would allow it. It would definitely be limited to the duration. As I said, it's usually, that's a temporary entrance, a condition that, usually during construction that we allow that. So you, it's kind of going outside the norm, uh, so I can't give you an answer right now. I would say most likely we would not allow it, because it's kind of a slippery slope if all of a sudden you allow everyone to use flagmen. But if you submit it, I can talk to the traffic engineer, it may be more likely that they would prefer a police officer there like you see on some churches, where they have the lights going. But I could discuss it, but I can't give any guarantees at this moment.
How long would you need to find out a answer for that?
Um, I think it would take about two to three weeks to, for everyone to get together and talk that out and make sure we've gone as high up as we need to go for that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other-
Yeah, I got, I got one more question. You was talking about this is for public use. If you look it up on this, uh, request, it's the operation of a private school.
Yes.
Would the private school, would that make a difference on the driveway?
No, uh, all public use means is that you're inviting people that do not live on your property to come to your property. It's, we call it the public, you, some people call it commercial use, but that confuses people. It's really what we call a commercial use. Uh, the public use is a layman's term, just to understand that you are inviting other people other than just your, the people that live on that street. You're inviting people that, um, either belong to a larger community or to a church group or are paying to go there. So that, that's when it becomes a public access.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Snell? Bowler, do you wanna come forward and we'll talk a little bit?
Yeah, I'm back.
Okay, you heard, you heard the answer that, uh, from Mr. Snell.
Yeah.
Uh, I assume you would like him to proceed to find out if my question was a flagman. I don't want him to go to that trouble if y'all, if you weren't willing to do that. If, if, if commercial entrance wasn't completed in time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just guessing that the flagman thing wouldn't be an option, you know, on our end.
Okay.
But I guess I can't speak for everybody. But I, I do, I do have some questions. It was mentioned about school buses. There won't be any, did you clarify that with him? There won't be any school buses.
Right.
And the, the way it is now, we're transporting our students to and from school now with, with vans. So what would be the difference? Is reversing it, they're coming to school and leaving school versus they're leaving our homes now and going to school and coming back home with the vans, not, traffic, the amount of traffic's not gonna change.
Your answer being a question that the VDOT representative, you need to ask him.
Is he on?
Yes, Mr. Snell?
Yeah, so the mode of transportation, uh, does not matter. You could say, I don't have a bus, and I don't have a van, and everybody's driving their own car. It's still a commercial entrance, um, that people are using, that they don't want to assume a risk that maybe you're willing to take, they want a safe entrance. And, I mean, that's our duty to provide that for them. So whether it's in a bus or a private car or a van or even a horse and buggy, the requirement would be the same.
Uh, another point I'd like to, to bring out, we have church services at our homes. And we look at the schools as part of our church. So every time we have church services on Sprouse's Lane, are we in violation?
Churches are permitted in an A1. I think the purpose of, or part to address Mr. Bowler's question is, tonight, the application for a private schoolhouse falls under a special use permit. It is not a by right activity. When a special use permit application is received, that is where the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors is tasked to maintain the integrity of this district and the safety of all citizens and anyone who may visit that particular appla-, area that was applied for, something outside of a by right use. That is why the driveway entrance is heavily reviewed. This is not something that's by right. The church activity is by right in an A1. You have made your application for a pri- private school, Mr. Bowler.
So, so you wouldn't be able to look at that as part of our church?
Your application states that it's a private school, it is for a certain period of time. It does not indicate that it's part of your worship services.
So basically what it comes down to is, in, in order for any S U P that gets issued, it's gotta have a VDOT-approved entrance.
The traffic impact determination is a part of every application, whether it's special use permit or a zoning mass amendment, uh, which is a request to rezone a property.
So is, is there any differences for a commercial entrance and a private school?
As you heard the definition tonight from VDOT, Mr. Snell, you're, the definition for commercial or public use is when there is anyone invited other than those that reside at the particular address. So whether you're utilizing it for a private school, you're operating a sawmill, or you have a storefront, you're inviting people to that particular, uh, or the area is open for someone or anyone who know, who does not reside at that area. Mr. Snell, you may want to address the public and commercial once again this evening.
Yeah, um, as I said, a commercial entrance is required anytime you have a, what you would call a business, so. It, whether it's industrial or commercial or institutional. So this is an institutional business, um, so it needs a commercial entrance. That's the actual VDOT definition.
Uh, there, there wouldn't be any difference, dominant old school, whatever, it, it's, it's all, it's all, it's all the same.
Right, that's what he's saying.
Uh, would Mr. Snell have any other suggestions? If we want to try to move forward with, with that school on that property? Other than we, there's no other option except the flagman and the new, new possible entrance?
Well, he did mention that you could get the, uh, see if you could work with the county to have a police officer in the morning with lights on, and a police officer in the evening when the chairman leave, that was another option. I don't, you know, I guess you'd have to talk to the sheriff's department in regards to that and see what they're, I'm not privy to that, so I don't know what to tell you, but you could question and see if, what they would do and what kind of cost it would be.
Yeah, without an approved commercial entrance, you really could not use that property for any type of business. Typically, schools will get a temporary building, whether it's a church or- or a home or something that has a good entrance, and just use that until they meet the requirements at their desired location. That doesn't help you a lot, but that's what a lot of small or schools do. They'll have a temporary location for a year or two, and then move into their new building when it's built up to the current specification.
I'd like to mention one other thing. We had been working with Mr. Edwards on this, and there had always kind of been the question about, you know, if we're gonna do that new entrance. And that's a question we had for Mr. Edwards, I did, and Mr. Smucker did as well. And what we gathered from him was that we'd be fine to use Sprouse's Lane. So that's kind of why it's progressed to here, because we didn't think we're gonna have any concerns with using Sprouse's Lane. Yes, we had the new entrance, you know, possibly coming in, and, you know, we'll use that as a last resort. So when Mr. Smucker went to Mr. Edwards for his signature on that, that Nikki needs for her, you know, her application package, Mr. Edwards wasn't willing to, to do that.
Well, all I could tell you is the decision has been made by the Highway Department that both in the packages we got, that they recommend the school is not be built unless the commercial, or not allowed to be open unless a commercial entrance is built. So I, I can't address what you and Mr. Edwards talked about because I wasn't there.
I'm just kind of explaining the
Right, I understand perfectly, but, you know, this is, this is what we, we are being, being told, and they have the control of it or the authority.
Well, we do have the traffic impact determination from October 6th from VDOT, and the addendum states a commercial operation of any kind inviting the public to use this entrance is not allowable. So, I mean, we, we've had an impact determination since October 6th about the sawmill, and this states that anything else would not be allowed, so.
What was the date on that?
October 6th.
And it was after that date that we had been working with Mr. Edwards on that.
Mr. Snell, would you like to address the comments by Mr. Bowler this evening?
Yes, I did talk to Mr. Edwards earlier today about this, the school and the sawmill. And he stated to me that he's always told the owners that they needed a commercial entrance. He's typically a very straightforward man, so the only thing I could imagine that there was a miscommunication, because as far as I can tell from talking to him, there was never a doubt about needing the commercial entrance.
We can only make a decision on the information we're given, and the Highway Department has said you have to use a commercial entrance.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, I'm not in position to, you know, say what we want to do as far as that. But there was another question on number four. You're requiring a commercial solid waste container that, that would have to be on site at the, at the proposed new school? Is that what it's referring to?
That's the use of the waste, son, yes.
And this condition is standard for every special use permit?
That's just trash and stuff goes in there. Pick it up once a week, I guess.
Has, has that changed, or I'm not aware that our other schools use that, I mean?
They should be adhering to that condition. You can further have conversation with Lynn Hill, he's the director of solid waste here at the county.
Yeah, but so that would be a requirement that?
For all of the special use permits, yes, sir.
Okay. It, it wouldn't be okay to just use the local, local dump like out there at Dillon? It would have to, have to have
Well, you'd have to talk to Mr. Hill. He would be able to tell you. I guess it would be his decision is based on how much debris, trash that you would generate.
In the solid waste ordinance, it does state that any business that operates adheres to the solid waste, and that would require you to have your own dumpster.
But you can talk to him, and so he might be able to shed some light on that for you.
Would it be appropriate for me to turn around and ask my friends if they have any questions? Being, I'm not really
Well, let me ask you this.
Yeah.
Being that Mr. Smucker's not here, and I understand having a loss in the family. You've got some information that you weren't expecting, and that's that you have to use a commercial entrance. We don't have to make a decision tonight, and we can table this until next month. Give you a chance, hopefully Mr. Smucker will be here. Give you all the time to talk and come up with questions in the direction you might want to go. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, but I guess what it really boils down to, if you can't, if VDOT can allow us to use Sprouse's Lane, you know, we're, we're probably done, you know, for, for that site.
Well, I'll tell you what, that's even a better reason to table this. And if that is the decision you make, just let Nikki know, and you just, you withdraw the application. Mr. Smucker would withdraw the application for the school.
I wouldn't have to make that decision right now.
No, that's why I'm giving you, I want, giving you the opportunity to have more leeway to make a decision.
Okay. Another question, if we, we as a school would use an alternative site, I mean, just to refresh my memory, how, how long is the process to, you know, go to, go through an SGP?
Approximately four months. I would need an application to be on the April agenda by Friday, April 1st. That's the deadline for April agenda.
April, May, June, July.
I'll be in four days.
All right, well, at this point, all I can say is we'll have to table it.
Okay.
Because I, I can't, I can't say
You can't make a decision, sir, I understand.
We're gonna have that new driveway and, you know, I, no. I'd say we'll have to table it.
All right, very good, sir. If, whenever, if you make a decision, you know, withdraw your application, just let Nikki know.
I think Mr. Snell is going to ask the question about the flaggers twice a day.
He already got an answer?
No, he was going to ask
Oh.
If a permit application is made, he would
Well, I would like, just in case, him to go proceed on that. But if you make a decision, as soon as you, y'all make a decision, if you decide not to do the school there and withdraw your application, let Nikki know so Mr. Snell won't be doing the work that he does, you know, getting, trying to get the answer from other people, if you don't mind. Appreciate that. Thanks, sir.
Anything else?
No. Okay. Nikki, see we have no new business?
No, this month. No, sir.
Okay, that brings us to your correspondence and reports.
Building permits are included for your information, and I don't have anything further as zoning administrator this evening.
That brings us to our commission matters. We, before we do the voting on a new chairman or vice chair, any other, anything that you want to speak on other than that? Any of the commissioners have anything? Nikki, do you want me to let you handle that? It's sort of like the process we starting from at the beginning?
Sure, so this evening I'll take over and handle nominations from the floor for the office of chairman currently. Mr. Bigford is our vice chair. I will add to this, this meeting once again, that we do so much appreciate the steadfast service from Mr. Pat Boe, who passed away about a month ago. And we do miss his leadership and guidance. I know he served many years on the Planning Commission, so making this change is no small feat, but I know that he'd be happy for business to continue, so to speak. So at this time, do we want to do chairman first or vice chairman first?
I would say go ahead and do the chairman first, yeah.
So at this time, we would take nominations from the floor for the position of chairman.
I nominate Johnny Bigford for chairman.
Second? Discussion? By a show of hands for the vote to Johnny Bigford chairman? Well, Chairman Bigford, I will turn this floor over to you.
Thank you, Nikki. All right, so now, our next order of business is vice chair. Do we have a nomination from committee for a vice chair?
Whatever one y'all want, who wants?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Steve Doyer.
All right, second.
Any more, any other nominations? And all in favor, raise your right hand for Mr. Doyer for vice chair. After. Thank you. Congratulations, Steve.
Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, if we have no other business for commissioners, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Okay, we got All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes you now.